Great.
Where do you want your?
Okay, I think we're ready. It's it's now nine oh one. At this time, I'd like to bring the today's meeting of July thirteen twenty twenty two to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So we have today, we have a new member, a new planning commissioner joining the planning commission. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, Chairman Ramirez. My name is Carlos Serrano Juan. I live in the city of San Bruno. I'm very honored to join you all in in your mission to make the county a better place. I was appointed by supervisor David Canepa, who I've known for over twenty years. And I'm a proud father of a fifteen year old daughter and a twelve year old daughter. My profession is I'm a commercial real estate broker. But previous life, I was a nonprofit executive for many, many years. I served in the US Army in Korea. I'm a disabled veteran. And I'm just just very, very excited to join you on learn from you all and support your work.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your introduction and you're welcome. And I think maybe some of the commissioners can also give you their welcome.
Well, and on behalf of the staff, I'd like to give you our warm welcome, Commissioner Serrano Juan. We appreciate having a fifth commissioner. You came in a great time. And so really appreciate your help with important work we do.
Thank you, Steve.
Great. Janet, can you do the roll call at this time?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Here.
Chair Ramirez?
Here.
My staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next, we have oral communications at this time. This is when the public, this is for items that are not on the agenda. And the public can speak to the commissioner, to the commission at this time. Janet, can you explain to the public how they can participate?
Yes, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I'll promptly unmute your account and you may begin speaking and you'll have five minutes. Right now, I don't see anybody from the public on the on the line, Chair.
Okay, I will unless there's an objection, I will close the oral communication for public participation. Then we have next, we have the consent agenda where we have the meeting, the the minutes for the meeting of June twenty second. And then the the resolution to be able to have this meeting online. Is the does anyone want to pull any of the items off the consent? And if not, can I consider a motion?
I think we need to pull the minutes. I don't know if the secretary wants to adjust those now or?
Yeah, I believe I sent them over, but I haven't posted them on the website yet. So it's up to you if you want to move them to the next agenda or keep them.
I just looked at the minutes and they look good to me. I would like to make a motion to approve the amended minutes. We just received the email that Janet sent with the amended minutes.
Correct.
I haven't a chat.
If commissioners are okay with with that, I make a motion.
If I could, if I could clarify with Janet, the amended minutes that are the subject of the present motion haven't yet been posted to the public website. Is that?
Yeah, the amended ones.
I'm going to recommend that we continue the item then. The public needs to see them before the board can act on them.
Got it. All right. So they will be postponed for for a future meeting. All right. With that, then we will have the the next item on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I make the motion, yes. We we moved the minutes for continuance and item two and three on the consent, I make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I think there's only two items and we're only.
Oh, only two, sorry.
Yes.
You didn't look at the agenda.
I would second it. We're approving item two.
Two.
All right. Janet, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Yeah, motion carries unanimously. The consent agenda is approved. And now we can move to the regular agenda. Janet, can you read it for the record?
Sure, just one second. We have agenda item number three. Owner applicant San Mateo County Parks Department file number PLN two zero two two dash zero 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 one one. Location Pigeon Point Viewpoint Parking Lot, west of Cabrillo Highway, unincorporated Pescadero West. And our project planner today is Summer Burleson.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Ramirez and Planning Commission. Summer Burleson, project planner, and I'm here to present item three. And so I have a brief presentation. Let me share my screen. Okay, hopefully this is visible. So item three is for great a hearing to consider a coastal development permit to install two benches for public use and path improvements at the Pigeon Point Viewpoint Parking Lot. This location, it's located between high west of highway one, between highway one and the ocean and east of the Pigeon Point Lighthouse Station down in Pescadero West area of the county. The coastal development permit is to install two wood wooden metal benches and a rock path for public use at this parking lot viewpoint location. Bench one will be located on a rocked path in close proximity to the existing parking lot and will be located approximately two hundred feet from the bluff's edge. And the rock path will replace the new rock path will replace an existing path of asphalt that's kind of broken down. So it will improve that that existing pathway. And that path will end approximately eighty feet from the bluff's edge. Bench two will be located thirty three feet from the bluff's edge and will not include any sort of rocked pad or pathway improvements. The location is shown here. The parking lot is this kind of semi circular area you seen on on the screen. Bench one, which includes a rocked pad and the rock pathway is shown kind of in the upper side of this view. And the second bench is located closer to the the bluff down kind of on the southern side of this area. And the benches will be again consist of wood and metal and is shown on the left images on the screen. Approximately, I think thirty five inches in height. And the construction of them will require minimal site disturbance. The project was reviewed for conformance with the local local coastal program policies for locating and planning new development agricultural component sensitive habitat, visual resources hazards shoreline access and recreation and visitor serving facility policies of the LCP and was found to be consistent with each applicable set of policies. The construction will have minimal impacts to the area given it's it's the two park benches and some rock padding. It's the location of these improvements would not compromise or negatively impact the ability for future agriculture to occur on the property, although no agriculture currently exists on the property. The property is located in the Cabrillo Highway State Scenic Corridor. However, given the low impact of of development that's proposed here wouldn't have any visual resource impacts to the area. And there is some existing shoreline access nearby. So the project doesn't require the need for additional shoreline access at at these particular points. And with regard to the planned agricultural zoning designation of the parcel, again, the the project requires minimal disturbance and is pretty low impact development improvements that would not preclude the property from being able to support agriculture operations should they be desired in the future. The project is subject to or a categorical exemption has been filed for the project under the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section fifteen three oh three E, Class E, Class Three for the construction of new small accessory structures. The county, this is a county project. And it's being led through the by the County Parks Department. And so the County Parks Department on behalf of the county filed a notice of categorical exemption with the county clerk back in February. And so staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit. County file number PLN two thousand twenty two dash zero 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 one one by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval and attachment A of the staff report. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Excuse me. Thank you, Summer. Mrs. Ketchum, do you have any questions? You're muted.
No, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Gupta?
It looks like a good project. I I just had a couple of questions more for curiosity. How were these locations for the two benches decided upon?
I would, our parks planner, Sam Hersberg, I believe, is on the call or on the meeting and I would defer that to to him.
Morning, Sam. I I'll just jump in real quick because I'm real familiar with the areas Sam is. And this is an iconic viewing spot that is attracts many folks just because of the incredible views of Pigeon Point Lighthouse you can obtain from there and of the ocean. And so it's a well used viewpoint. And I think that addition of the benches is intended to enhance a location that is already very popular to the public. Would you agree with that, Sam?
I would. I'd also add that the photo from this location has been on the county budget books in the past as kind of iconic photo of San Mateo County. This was previously a disturbed area. There was unauthorized camping that was taking place for a number of years. And maybe about ten years ago, the county parks with County Public Works put up guardrail and and formalized parking within the highway one right of way. So people could pull off if they wanted to. But one and we did some restoration of the area as well. But one thing is that people do like to stop here and they do like to come and take a picture. And it's a a great place to have a seat on a bench. And 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 so so we made some some minimal improvements here for visitor amenities based on our knowledge of the the use historically and currently of the site. But we're really trying to keep the parking within the highway one right away and not off road, which is what it was for many years.
Okay, yeah, because what I noticed is that one bench is closer to the bluff while the other one is very close to the parking lot or parking area from what I read there. So so that's what I was wondering. I thought if if the idea was for people to sit down and enjoy the view, it both would be closer to the bluff. So that's where my question was coming.
Yeah, that's a fair question. And and you know, not everybody has the walking mobility to walk as far out to the bluff. And so we wanted to present a sitting option for people to get out of their cars and sit closer if they were mobility challenged.
And I would also note that the bench that is closer to the parking lot will have improvements to the pathway that would facilitate access to that bench. And you don't wouldn't want to, I think, make pathway improvements in close proximity to the bluff where the gravels will, you know, find their way into the sea. So I think the it was appropriate to select one that will to improve pathway that provides easy access and then one that gets you closer to the bluff but keeps the land undisturbed or just a minimal path.
Right, yes. I I haven't visited that area, but when I did a Google search, it looked beautiful. Really looked very nice, very nice and like it enhances the recreation opportunities for people to go and visit and thank you. And my other question is, is that going to the installation of benches going to take place sometime soon? Or is that sometime later on?
Yeah, so these are county park specify specifications. So we have a certain spec spec for these types of benches. These are considered memorial benches. And there is a a long list of people who are interested in donating a bench through the San Mateo County Park Foundation. And so what we're always trying to do is find the appropriate places that, you know, that work but are not, you know, we're not trying to overbench our parks, but we're trying to put place them in specific scenic locations. And so these benches are already spoken for and they're just waiting to be installed. And they're going to be installed very quickly.
Okay. Great, great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more questions.
Mr. Hanson, any questions?
No questions. I want to first thank Summer for a very nice succinct report. I like that. Want to say good morning to Sam and following up on images and just add to more to Sam. The county schools use that location for their logo. And when I was a kid, Pacific Telephone used that on the cover of the phone book, if anybody knows. But other than that, nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Serrano Juan, any questions?
No questions. Just want to commend the staff on the good presentation. Thank you.
Great. Well, I don't have any questions either. So I think at this point, we can open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Chair. I was muted. Sorry. This is public comment for item number. Sorry, was it item number three? Sorry, excuse me. Four, number four. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. And let's give it a few seconds because I don't see anybody with their hand raised at the moment. No hands raised for this item, Chair.
Got it. All right. So seeing that there is no no one that wants to speak on this item, I will close public participation at this time. Okay, is can we have our discussion on this? This is Gupta?
No, I really liked and am and am in support of this project. I think it's it's a beautiful area and look forward to visiting it sometime soon. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for doing these and bringing these enhancing these coastal areas. Thank you.
Ms. Ketchum?
Well, I support the project and just want to say hi to Sam. Haven't seen you in a long time. Good to see you.
Mr. Hanson?
I'm in full support.
Mr. Serrano Juan?
Support.
Great. Yeah, I too am in the full support. And I just also want to say, you know, great work to the to the parks department, you know, San Mateo Parks for all the work that they do on enhancing our open spaces, you know, parks. I had a chance to be out there in Memorial Park over the weekend, this past weekend. And it's amazing what you guys do, you know, found the facilities really well kept and, you know, all the new facilities that have been installed. So great way, great work for what you guys are doing out there. With that, do we have a motion for this item?
I can do that. I move to approve the coastal development permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty two dash zero 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 one one by making required findings and adopting the conditions of approval and attachment A of the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Janet, can you do a a a role in this?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. This item is now approved. So I guess it's going to be one of our shortest meetings. So today, let's see, correspondence and other matters.
Good morning, commissioners. The correspondence I wanted to inform you about relates to matter that I was going to talk about in the director's report, which was the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday where they considered the ZMA appeal. So I'll wait to fill you in on that until I get to the director's report. With regard to the next meeting, we don't have a study session scheduled. We do have permit applications for a new well in La Honda to serve a new residence. So look forward to presenting that item to you then. So regarding the director's report, I wanted to update you on the meeting yesterday and of the upcoming meeting of the board, which will be on July twenty six. So yesterday, the board considered the applicant's appeal of the planning commission's denial of the permits for the minor subdivision known as the ZMA project in the Highlands. And I believe some at least some of the commissioners were on that hearing. And for those of you who tuned in, I hope you feel that I accurately represented the actions that were taken by the planning commission. We you know, did our best to represent that what the findings that were decided and the Board of Supervisors gave it a lot of consideration and ultimately decided to continue it to the next meeting. So as I mentioned, that will be on July twenty sixth. Also, at that Board of Supervisors meeting, we'll be presenting Connect the Coast Side. Commissioner Serrano Juan, Connect the Coast Side is a comprehensive transportation management plan for the area of the county between Devil Slide, Half Moon Bay and Two Eighty. And it's been presented to the planning commission previously. At this point, it's we hope to obtain Board of Supervisors adoption. And following adoption of that plan, we will be pursuing the implementation of various projects and programs envisioned by the plan, which will likely come before you in the future. So it might be something you would be interested in reading or checking out the Board of Supervisors meeting next week. In addition to Connect the Coast Side and the ZMA appeal, the board will be considering the general plan amendment and zoning amendments and the minor subdivision for the Palmer property. The commissioners, at least four of you probably recall that this is the parcel that was I forget, deannexed from Atherton. I don't think deannexed is the right word, but it was in the city of Atherton and got moved back into the county. And so we needed to establish a general plan designation zoning designation. You endorsed that previously and the board will be considering that on twenty six. Finally, they'll be considering the second reading of an update to our cannabis cultivation regulations or ordinance. We in our county, the only type of commercial cannabis activity that's allowed with a license is cultivation. Though that ordinance was established approximately four, four and a half years ago. And the current amendments just seek to make minor adjustments and improvements to streamline the process and to respond to the feedback that we've received from the growers, which aren't many. At this point, we have five licensees operating on two different sites. So if any of you are interested in more information about that, I'm happy to provide it. Finally, I just wanted to update you on some long range planning efforts and let you know that unfortunately, our planning manager Melissa Ross has moved on. She was recently married and is moving locations and is in a position now where she is able to take a break from work and focus on her family life. So good for her, but a big loss for the department. The commission annually reviews our the long range work plan. And so those of you who have been part of that, those reviews know that we have long list of important updates to our plans and regulations and limited resources to do that. So we will be opening a recruitment for her position as soon as possible. But you know, the reality of recruitment in the county these days is it will be at least a few months. Luckily, our deputy director Lisa Alzaza is well equipped to step in and help fill the gaps. And that was the position I was first hired as the planning manager. So I'm too, we'll be there to help fill the gaps. But it will, you know, limits our ability to meet the timelines envisioned in our work plan to try and moderate that. We have put out a couple of requests for proposals in hopes that we can get some help from private consultants in moving these things along. So that includes a request for proposals to take the update of our tree. So uh, that includes a request for proposals to uh, take the update of our tree regulations over the finish line. Uh, those of you who've been following that effort know it has been a multi-year effort where we've um, really uh, had a lot of input from various groups uh, with various interests. And so uh, we're hoping to close the loop on that this year. Um, the other um, efforts that uh, you may already be aware of is um, in our North Fair Oaks area where um, we adopted a little over ten years ago, a community plan. We've been implementing that community plan um, since it was adopted by uh, taking a freight phase approach to zoning updates. And um, we are about to initiate, we have initiated our fourth phase of zoning updates. Uh, and this is kind of a carryover from one of our initial phases where we essentially upzoned the corridors along Middlefield and El Camino um, to allow for higher density um, residential and mixed-use development. And um, as we've discussed previously, we found that that upzoning, which only covered half a block and did not go all the way to the streets behind Middlefield in El Camino, really has restricted the ability of property owners to achieve some of the objectives in the plan. So we'll be taking a close look at about whether or not it's appropriate to extend the, the new zoning, another half block uh, on both sides of the road so that we can achieve the density we had hoped for. Uh, as you know, this is an important area in terms of the county's ability to achieve our regional housing allocation. Um, we're on our, uh, I think it's uh, cycle six of our housing element update. So that's another important piece of our long-range work that is currently occurring. And we need to demonstrate to the state that we have adequate sites to support the number of units we've been assigned. And so this uh, zoning update will be um, an important piece to addressing that requirement. Um, in conjunction with the uh, fourth phase of the zoning update, we are embarking on somewhat of a unique project to do a ten-year review of that plan. Um, we've been uh, directed to uh, by the supervisors to uh, evaluate the progress that has been made in achieving some of the important and very broad objectives of that community plan. And uh, doing that with a thorough outreach plan where we um, make sure that our efforts are in line with the highest priorities of the community. So um, we put an RFP out for that. We are now evaluating the responses and that should kick off uh, fairly soon. And I think that will help inform the zoning update I was previously talking about. Finally, uh, the safety element, uh, it's a requirement under state law now that um, once you initiate uh, updates to two uh, elements of our general plan, we must also begin to update our safety element. So uh, the time has come for us to do that and um, we are collaborating with the Office of Sustainability um, to um, make sure that our safety element um, not only addresses all the traditional safety concerns that uh, you're familiar with, but also does it in a way that's responsive to the impacts of climate change. So that's where the partnership with Office of Sustainability is uh, really key. So um, I threw a lot into that update. I apologize. Perhaps I should have stopped for breaks and questions. Um, if, uh, but I open it up now to questions and comments.
I think you just want to extend our meeting a little longer today.
Well, uh, let me say to uh, Commissioner Serrano Quan that yes, usually these meetings are not quite this easy. It's always nice to have a public project that everybody likes. Um, that's usually not the case. In, in fact, um, we had another item on the agenda that got postponed, as you probably saw, at the request of the applicant, and that's uh, Caltrans. So um, Cal, uh, this is a project where Caltrans uh, would like to install uh, various improvements along uh, the Highway One corridor. Um, the most controversial, I'd say, is the variable message signing. So the Commissioners are likely familiar with the signs that provide messages to motorists that can be changed based on the need of the message. Um, and those are frequently used on a temporary basis. Caltrans is proposing to install some of these signs that would remain there on a permanent basis. And uh, it's controversial because as you know, um, you know, protecting the visual quality of uh, our coastline is very important. And um, you know, the residents out there are uh, very, many are very much against any unnecessary lights. So um, I think that, that's the question that we'll be grappling with when this item is before you is are those signs truly necessary for public health and safety? And if so, have they been located in the right places? So um, we've expressed to Caltrans our concerns about that aspect of the project. And I, I think that's one of the primary reasons that they've asked for postponement twice now is that I think they're working with their team to make sure that they are taking those issues seriously and they're prepared to address them. So um, had that not been postponed, we would have had a longer uh, meeting, more controversial. But uh, you, you did uh, catch me in the act, uh, Mr. Chairman. I thought I'd take advantage of the short meeting to give you guys a longer update.
Excellent. Now that, that's fine. Uh, yeah, totally fine on that. Um, so questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Ketchum?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Steve, for the longer update. Always appreciate that. I, I had a question on the uh, Caltrans State, State Route One Wireless Traffic Operation System. Um, is this uh, because we saw a staff report back in May. Has the project been modified or are we still going to be looking at the same proposal?
There have been no modifications.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Is this coming up in the, on the next meeting?
Um, yes. Uh, Janice, can you remind me of the meeting, the date of the meeting that they requested? I might have to go back to the evening.
They said the second meeting in August, actually. So it's not the next meeting, but a couple after.
Okay. So sorry to interrupt. I just kind of.
It, it's okay. Mr. Gupta, any more questions besides that?
Um.
For Steve?
Sorry, I, I forgot. Uh, I did have a, but go ahead. Uh, I'll come back to.
Okay, Mr. Hanson? No? I'm, I'm not sure if you're muted or not. I, I didn't hear it. Oh, okay.
I am amazed that we have a planning department. The only one I know in the county that does some support. It's Commission on its recommendations. And then it looks, after going through a public process, saying, we know better. And the public process doesn't. And I thought the support of what our concerns and depth of it was short shrift in the meeting. So. You want to know? You, you got it.
Uh, Mr. Serrano Quan, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I want to just thank the, thanks Steve for giving me all of us an update. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Um, yeah, I don't have uh, any questions either. Um, a- actually, one, one quick question, uh, now that it comes to my mind. Um, as you were talking about the North Fair Oaks, um, any, any updates on the Middlefield? Wh- where are we at? What, what's, what is it looking as far as how, how? You know, how soon are we gonna see a final product on, on that street?
Um, unfortunately, Commissioner Ramirez, I, I, I don't know the timeline there, but um, I will be prepared to update you on that at our next meeting.
Excellent. All right. Gupta, I think I saw your hands raised.
Yes, yes. Okay. Uh, so first of all, I wanted to welcome our new Commissioners, Commissioner Serrano Quan. Okay, we've been long awaiting uh, to have, have our fifth Commissioner on board. Uh, we, we kind of felt our Commission was uh, imbalanced uh, and kind of tiptoeing around uh, on, on various projects as to how to go about it. So welcome and we are looking forward to working with you. Okay, so that's.
Commissioner Gupta, maybe too balanced.
No, I, I, I think it's, uh, we, we are really looking forward to it. Okay, my, my other question really is about the uh, I, I need to understand the minutes of the meeting and for the last many, many times, what I find is as minutes of the meeting are either uh, not posted or even later on, they do, do not get posted. How are the minutes used and what is the process that we should use going forward uh, in terms of approving the minutes?
I'll jump in, Commissioner Gupta. I, I think the purpose of the minutes is uh, obviously to make sure that um, the deliberations and the actions of the Commission are accurately captured. Um, I think, you know, its usefulness has somewhat diminished with the advent of the video recording and posting. That's probably the best source, best archive for uh, you know, the discussions. I don't, uh, typically, it's uh, not possible to capture all of that in the minutes and we just really focus on what the action was. Um, to the degree we are having issues with um, the timeline for posting or for make, getting you drafts, um, that's on me and Janice. And I will work with her on um, taking a look at a schedule and making sure that we have a, you know, set timeframe for getting those out and getting those posted. And I apologize if there's been problems with that today.
Okay. Uh, but between the minutes and the videos, uh, I don't see videos either.
So, so you might recall the meeting where we had a um, uh, change in our website platform occur the midnight before. And um, unfortunately, we had to cancel that because when they did the switch over, they didn't switch everything that needed to be switched over. And that in, in, when that happened, we also lost some of the video archives. My understanding is that has been corrected. Um, and Janet and I are working with ISD to make sure um, you know, gets those videos get posted as promptly as possible. Um, Janice, do you have any updates or anything you'd like to add to that?
You're correct. I have been working with uh, ISD to kind of go through all the videos and see what's missing and kind of make sure those get reloaded because we do have them saved. Um, you know, for example, commi- uh, Supervisors or Commissioners, if they ask for a video, then we can go ahead and send them that link. Uh, or let, you know, let us know. But yeah, we, we are working on a process and a timeline and what's, you know, going through all documents and making sure that everything um, is uploaded correctly.
Okay. So the plan is to continue to post the videos, is that?
Absolutely. And um, just on that note, Commissioner Ketchum has offered some good suggestions and requests to, to ease searchability and so forth. And so I'm working with the team now so that we can really um, make the best website possible. And so we'll continue to work on that and we appreciate your feedback on it.
Right, right. And it, and it would be great if it's uh, done uh, in like, not just the morning of the meeting. It's, it's done ahead of time, in a reasonable time. Right.
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, what, what, what I'd like to aim for, and let me know if you uh, don't agree, that um, you know, when we are ready to post the agenda, that the, you know, at the same time we're posting the other items, the minutes will be posted as well.
That would be perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just add to that, um, as far as the accuracy and timing of approval of the minutes, I, 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 I just think it's essential to have those action items accurate for the, for the permanent record. And uh, and, and so we've been struggling with this for some time and I um, I think if, if we could just, for me anyway, I know at some point, the, the request was made to have more detail under the Director's Report, this portion we're talking about. If, if there's a stress here, I, I would be willing to just go back to strictly action minutes until we get that smoothly, accurately accomplished. And um, I don't know if others agree with that, but um, if that will help. I think that, but I think that the action items need to be accurate and, and to have enough time to review this and get the, and get the accurate uh, what we're going to vote on published. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ketchum. I agree. And um, if we can make it simpler in order to make it smoother, more, more prompt and more accurate, then yeah, I'm all for that. So I'll work with Tim and Janice towards that.
Thank you.
Um, all right. I, I think uh, that's it for questions. Uh, I just wanted to again uh, make my final comments on welcoming Commissioner Serrano Quan. Um, and just to let you know that it is very important that um, the fifth Commissioner um, sits here on this meetings. Uh, because it, it makes it a lot easier to run a meeting when we have, you know, certain items that are controversial and we may need that to send them both um, one way or the other. So welcome and, and thank you very much for accepting um, to, to be here with us. Uh, next also uh, to Mrs. Melissa Ross. I just want to congratulate her on her next chapter in life. Uh, so thanks for all the work that she's done for, for this county. Um, and, and for, you know, for you guys, Steve now, you know, you have your workout out for you to try to replace her and, and try to keep up with the workload that you guys have. So I think with that, um, I'm gonna say that this meeting, it's adjourned at nine forty-eight. So see you guys at the next meeting. Thank you.
See you then. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
See you. Have a good day.
Bye-bye.